Good evening. We'd like to begin our Union Bridge Town Council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. And it's August 24th at 7:00 PM. And first thing on our agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding ordinance number 316. 316. It proposes to amend the Union Bridge Code, Chapter 220, Article 4, to provide criteria for review and approval of small wireless facilities, and Article 15 to modify the criteria for qualifications in conduct of zoning administration. Ordinance 316 was introduced on July 27, 2020. Public hearing was advertised in Carroll County Times on August 13 and August 20, 2020. Are there any questions or comments regarding the ordinance number 316? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing for ordinance 316 is closed, and at this time we will begin our regular council meeting. First on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes for July and the operating statement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the July operating statements from July 27, 2020, the council meeting minutes, August 10, 2020, work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for July 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna change around on our agenda from normal. Next, we'll have Mike Anals would give us a report on the water treatment energy generator project.
Hi, everybody. Basically, just wanted to give you an update briefing paper. It should be in your pocket regarding the emergency generator project. We had our bid opening on July the 28th, and we had three bidders. One was Urban Francis LLC. The other was Swamp Electric Company Incorporated, and the other is Monoxie Valley Electric Company. The lowest bid was for Urban Francis. They came in at $60,595. Monoxie Valley was second at $64,260. And Swamp Electric was the highest, that's $77,005. After comparing the two bids or the three bids and the equipment being bid out for each, I determined that Swamp Electric was proposing that we use a 200 kilowatt generator versus the other two priced out a 150 kilowatt generator. So, it was smaller. That accounts for the big difference in price. If all would have been the same amount, you're talking, everybody's pretty much within $4,000 of each other for the bid. I did notice that everybody had asked questions. Everybody had come in and take a look for the pre-bid. And they were engaged in looking at the plans. I did notice that Swamp did a little bit of extra work as far as going to Potomac Edison that I witnessed and getting copies of our last year of electricity bills from Potomac Edison. So, they did a little bit deeper dive, I thought. So, I thought the justification for the 200 watt is probably there. So, basically, I I asked for a design-build bid for this, so it wasn't something that we said, "Give us a price for a certain generator." I wanted them to take a look at the water plant and tell me what we needed, and so these are what came back. And I did compare everybody. All the feedback that we got from the references was favorable. Everybody scored well with that. So, basically, what I would recommend, based on what I saw, the research and the relationship with previous projects that we have with Swamp Electric, I would recommend that we go with their bid at $77,005. So, I would basically like to request that a motion be made to do that, and I'm here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay, council's heard Mike's recommendation. Are there any questions? Hearing none. I'd like someone to make a motion to entertain a bid or a motion to go with Swamp Electric for $77,005.
I'll make a motion that we go with Swamp Electric for $77,005.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Motion is carried. Mike, we had Swamp Electric. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll get moving on it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we're going down to the mayor's report.
Thanks, Mike. And if you want to, you can either stay or you can leave the meeting. I appreciate you coming on and doing this.
I appreciate it. I haven't grabbed dinner, so I'm just gonna go ahead and do that. That's okay.
Okay.
So, have a good night. Thanks, all. All right, thank you.
Okay, my report's kind of short. Last Friday, when we had our conference with the governor's office at lunchtime, this was the first time in the last five months that they brought up the idea or let us know that drug overdose doses are still out there. From March till last week, they're up 30%. Not really something to brag about. What we've been hearing about is COVID-19, but the drug overdose is still out there. We thought fentanyl was a bad thing, but there's another drug out on the market that is worse than fentanyl. Carroll County hasn't seen any of the new drug that Frederick County has already seen three or four deaths from. This is a lot worse than what fentanyl is. Hopefully, it won't be rising in Carroll County anytime soon. So, we're just gonna keep an eye on that and our people try to keep your head straight. Last Thursday night in Union Bridge at the fire hall, census people from the county were up. They had an ice cream social trying to get people to come in and fill out their census report. Carroll County was in the top five around the state of Maryland with census reports being filled out. But unfortunately, Union Bridge and New Windsor are the two lowest communities in the county. Our account is very, very poor. We're down to about maybe 12%, 13% of people in our town that fell out of census report. It hurts us when we go to get grants because all they're looking for is how many people in a household. And each person amounts to $1,800. So, if you take the next time we have census will be 10 years from now, that's $18,000 released from every person that doesn't fill out a census report. All they want to know is head counts. You're not worried, but your income is bad. Tried to people fill them out and still haven't filled out the first set of numbers. Tell anybody that hasn't done it, go up there and bang on some doors. I hear the ice cream social was pretty good. Some of the people came and got their free ice cream and still didn't sign up due to census, so. Something we just have to deal with, so. Try to get as many people out there as we can and so can make us look a little bit better and help our numbers when we go get some grant funding. Carroll Municipal League Legislative Committee is gonna meet this week, and one of our number one priorities again this year is gonna be APRR funding. Make sure that we can get that restored by 2025. We already know with all the COVID-19 stuff that's going on, our budgets next year are gonna be pretty slim. So, they are fighting to see if we can get that APRR money back and get it restored. Because we know we probably lost a little bit of money this year on that, and we don't want to lose more next year and the year after that, so we're trying to get that restored. I talked to someone at the county last week, and I'm gonna talk to him again, see about when we're gonna get our boat ramp down here for the kayaks. The summertime's gonna be over, but they say people use those year-round. But I do understand that the county employees were only working like one day a week for all summer long, so I know this isn't one of the top priorities. You have to catch up on, but keep talking to them about that. Hopefully, that can be done. Union Bridge Fire Company this coming Saturday will have crab cake sale, and that is all pre-order. So, you have between, I think tomorrow, if anybody can name, I want to pre-order crab cakes. There's two phone numbers. I think Jean Kermin and Ann and Marvel, their phone numbers are there so that they can get the right amount of crab meat ordered so they can make crab cakes for this week. They all will be, they will always, if we cook crab cakes, not frozen, so you'll have to make arrangements to get them. That is about all that I have right now in my report. We'll go to our attorney, John McGarrett.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jones. And up first is discussion and/or action on ordinance number 316. I will add one additional fact to the record, and that is that we did send notice to the legal department at American Tower. And since we have a sort of partnership with the tower company, we wanted to give them the opportunity to comment or respond to ordinance 316, which does not directly apply to a large tower. But nevertheless, we thought that because it's a wireless communications scenario that they might have an interest. And as far as I can see, they are not on the meeting tonight. And although I got an acknowledgement from their legal department that they received our communication, and they were going to transfer it to the responsible people, I did not get any substantive reply back from American Tower. So, with that, Mandy is on the call as well. If there's any discussion about ordinance 316, I guess we're ready to answer your questions. Other than that, Mayor Jones, it would be up for a motion this evening.
Okay. Council has no further questions on that. I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 316.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 316 for the zoning administrator in small wireless facilities. Sorry.
A motion and a second. Is there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Everybody was aye, so that's approved. Thank you very much. You have all that done?
I'm good.
Okay, okay.
I have yeah, I have a few items to report that are not on the agenda, but for informational purposes. I guess the first one is a little more than informational purposes. We have these communications with Chris Hine at the county about locust wetland. I think that council is more or less up to date on where we stand with that. Being that, you know, Mike Zekman's fairly comfortable that he can oversee the water and sewer relocation aspect of the project, but does not have the expertise to evaluate the stormwater management, design, and long-term maintenance. We have an offer from Chris at the county that he can arrange for an independent review of the consultant's design being done through the Bureau of Utilities at the county. And that they can also arrange for the inspections. So, those are steps in the right direction that do not, will not cost the town anything. That leaves, you know, the final question. Is there enough of a concern on the part of the council that the town ought to give consideration to retaining its engineers, or maybe at least getting a proposal from its engineers to evaluate the long-term maintenance design and potential cost to the town? Now, and the thinking is that once this gets designed and approved, it sort of is what it is. So, if there is gonna be another set of eyes looking at this, it probably ought to happen now. So, we're looking for direction on that. I have not gotten back to Chris Hine. I wanted to hear from the council first as to which direction we want to go.
Okay, I've been sitting on the WRCC meeting or committee for, I don't know, probably the last four or five years since they started this program and talked to some of the other towns, some of the other town managers, and they've been pretty much letting the county take care of that part of it. Theirs have been pretty simple. They've had new plant, new projects going on. They didn't have water and sewer lines and things that were moved or anything like that, so. They were kind of recommending our guy. I mean, Mike looked at it, and I think he was at one time saying, you know, let the county take care of it. He thought they had more expertise at that. I don't know. The rest of you have any ideas on that, would you think?
Well, I'm sure they have more expertise than what we do.
Reading over to contract, John, do you think we should probably get our engineers involved or accept what the county wants to do?
I don't think there's any doubt that between the county and the private consultants that they're very competent in stormwater management design. I only raise the issue because the long-term maintenance of the facility falls back on the town, and I don't have the expertise, and nor does anyone on the inside at the town have the expertise to know whether they are designing this to control costs now, only to find out, you know, in the future that there are costs to the town that we don't know about. And I'm not suggesting that there is. Maybe this is fairly simple. It's just that and we have not directly asked the consultant, so we have the opportunity. You know, if the town does not want to spend money on its own private engineer, at least at this point, I guess we could go back to Chris and explain what that concern is and have them give the town an explanation as to what the long-term maintenance aspect to this is. And, you know, maybe we'll hear that it's not anything to worry about. That would be great, but none of us have the expertise really to know that. And nor does Mike Zach. Mike was quick to warn that he can help us with the water and sewer lines, but when it comes to stormwater management design, that's a whole different area of expertise.
Yeah, I know.
Just to frame it, I think the choices, if I'm reading what I'm hearing correctly, the choices are, we will go back to Chris and take him up on his offer for the county and the consultants to do the design and independent review of that design by the county and the inspections by the county or the private consultant, however they arrange that, with Mike Zekman being there and present to oversee some of the water and sewer lines. And so, I think that the choice here is, does council want to go out and price what it would cost for our engineers to take a second look at that? Or, I think the backup to that would be that when I go back to Chris Hine and explain what the town would like to do is to ask for an explanation through the consultants as to what are the long-term maintenance costs and get some representation from them. And then if we're not comfortable, you know, we may need to our own people, but nobody's asking that question. They're just designing this based on whatever their program is. That's what concerns me, and I hope I'm not making too much out of it. But I also don't want the town to find out, you know, five years from now that there's a big maintenance cost that nobody knew about.
Yeah, I think what I've found over the years, every year we do a county tour of the maintenance facilities that they've put in and the ones that they were going to do, and some of the biggest concerns is with the maintenance of the mowing. So, they have made them over the years where the banks were slow, where you could go in and maintain them without having to get, you know, specialized equipment to go down the banks. They haven't flowed where you can go in and have them mowed occasionally, you know, take care of that facility. And just with what Chris and him have been doing and before she retired, we haven't had many questions as far as maintenance over the last four or five years. When we do the tours every summer, we were supposed to do a tour in June, but unfortunately, we didn't do that on COVID-19. But that's usually our yearly tour for all the facilities that are in the county. But I think your suggestion, John, is go back to Chris and, you know, have him to, you know, ask him that question, what they think the long-term maintenance plan will be. And then, you know, I think that will maybe answer some of our questions and help us along there.
Okay, that's my direction.
You also okay with that?
I'm in agreement with it.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Then I'll go forward with that and just keep everybody in the loop. Two other quick things, just to give the council an update. There is a pretty intense effort right now by surveyors for Union Bridge Solar to prepare an annexation plat, and I guess also plating for their site plan. And they've been in constant contact with Ned Cuman, and we dug up some old town resolutions because there's a little bit of doubt as to them tying into the town boundaries. It's not a long, it's not a problem. It's just something they're sorting out. And that is going on, and they're putting a lot of effort into getting that right. So, I suspect we'll see a finished product, which will lead to an annexation petition as the year goes on. And the other thing I can report, we had a comment and some discussion last month about the electric car charging stations, and I did ask Ned Cuman to keep an eye on that prospect as he oversees this site plan, site development plan review that's going on at the county for the UV solar project with the thought that maybe at some point that can be worked into a plan or at least discussed so that that idea doesn't get lost. So, Ned's aware of it. He's acknowledged it and intends to bring it up in discussion at the right time. And, Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, John. Hey. You're up to Depper, Deputy Kalusi, Brian?
Good evening. Between the base of June 15th to August 23rd, the county legislature responded to 153 calls from services to town and to Union Bridge. All those calls for service, only several required reports were in the following. On June 26th, approximately 5:28 PM, they responded to the 4700 block of Union Valley Road. In fact, investigation revealed that no subjects removed a shopping cart from a location and failed to return it. Property was recovered and kitchen remains open. On July 22nd, at approximately 8:00, 7:00 PM, deputy sprung the 100 block of East Park, which being in reference to a late investigation revealed that the incident occurred outside of town. Where all parties have been identified, kitchen remains open. On July 3rd, at approximately 11:24 AM, deputy sprung for the 4700 block of Union Valley Road in reference to assisting Leon Peter Township Police Department with a missing persons case. It was learned that a person matching this description, their missing person, was observed from the data bar at the location. Information was obtained from the location forwarded to the investigators from the Leon Peter Township Police Department. The sheriff's office case has been disclosed. On August 1st, so approximately 1:17 PM, deputy sprung to the 8 block of South Main Street, and that was to a theft investigation. We have that unknown suspect stole the vehicle or distraction plate from where the vehicle sometime during that week. Kitchen remains open. On August 8th, at approximately 10:08 AM, deputy sprung to the 100 block of Union Bridge Road, in reference to an injured deer. Due to the injuries, the deer was seen in his case works on August 8th. At approximately 7:41 PM, deputy sprung to the 400 block of Quaker Hill Road, in reference to drug overdose. On arrival, was determined that the victim had overdose and was currently unresponsive. The victim was alert and not deceased after all, to reside and fail, kitchen remains open. On August 10th, at approximately 10:30 AM, deputy sprung to the 8 block of South Farquhar Street, in reference to a burglary. Investigation revealed that the suspect entered a garage at the location and stole property. Kitchen remains open. That's all I have to report. Any comments, questions, comments, or complaints?
Well, you have a report that you can email me, Brian. Brian? You do? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thanks.
You were very broken up. A lot of background noise.
All right, Brian, can you hear me?
I can.
Good. The 200 block. We are installing gonna be one on each. Not putting one up on every block. Correct that is. The issue and parking over on a farm because it may be a little communication and they can leave the same way they come in, go back to Shepherd's Mill Road instead of coming back into town on the latest road. If that doesn't work by a suggestion, then we'll address, we'll go further.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we're down to public comments and concerns. Anyone out there have anything for us this evening? I see Sherry's on there. I know Sherry's got something to say.
I can say hi. That's about it. The store's doing great.
All right, thank you. The only, I have one complaint I just got today is that, and it's not really your concern, but it is because you have some of the people that are working in the store are parking right on the curb on the yellow mark where you turn into the bank. People that have bigger pickup trucks, these big diesel trucks are complaining because they're having a hard time turning in there. People are parking all the way out to the end, but there's, when you turn into the bank parking lot, there's probably about a 20-foot curb there. It has a yellow mark on it, and people are parking in the yellow. So, maybe you can tell them or ask them not to park there because if the bank gives us permission because people are complaining, well, then we can give them parking tickets there, but we're not gonna start that unless we get permission from the bank. Maybe with the cooperation of the people that are working in the store, they'll move up and not park right on that corner because bigger trucks are having a hard time turning in to get to the Bigger trucks are having a hard time turning in to get to the ATM.
I will definitely bring that up. We've got a couple of little issues we had to iron out, so we're a work in progress, but I will definitely pass that along.
Okay, thank you. That just came in this afternoon or this evening when one of, one of the bigger trucks had told me he had a problem making that turn when people parked there on the weekends.
Yeah, especially that big black truck that parks on the opposite side as you try to go out. That one's, it makes it hard to see.
Yes.
So I think those are residents. Those, they're not anybody associated with us.
Right, but when you turn in off of Main, they park right on the corner where the. Insurance shop is. When you turn in there, that yellow mark is up there probably about 20 feet. They're parking all the way down to the end of Main Street and that's what their complaint is.
Right, I know exactly what you're talking about. So it's actually both sides of the building that people are causing problems, but. I'll definitely tell the ones who are helping out the store not to park there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, we're down to committee reports. Start developing.
I am so lucky to go first. I've actually had several calls about different things with trash. People putting things out that shouldn't be put out. People trying to put furniture and stuff out for the trash company to haul away. And I, today I actually got a website form from our. Website. Somebody asks, asking a question about the bulk pickup. So I will respond to them and see what we can work out. I had. Some calls about issues with people parking on the. The wrong way on the street. I've addressed that with those individuals and I've been assured that they will not do it again. And since they know me personally, I'm sure they won't. Then also the. Gallant, how I can never pronounce their name correctly. The people that own where Mr. Sipes had the. Handicapped parking spot put in. Let us know that Mr. Sipes and his family no longer live there and they'd like it removed. I tried to get ahold of the MVA, but. They're not responding and I didn't have time to actually go into their office. So we've agreed since they sent us notification that that. Person no longer lives there. There's no reason to have that handicap spot there anymore because it is a permitted handicap spot. And only good for the person it's permitted for. So Donald and I discussed it and he's having. And might have already had him do it. Can he take the handicap sign down, paint over the handicap spot? On the road and put a speed limit sign up there? The only other thing I have, I'm sorry?
I have a question. Why do we need a speed limit sign on every diagonal corner in town? When you've got to come up there, you've got to stop, you've got to slow down. We're starting something that's going to be nothing but a nuisance on every block in town. I mean, I know people go a little fast, but I think we're, we're starting something that. Everybody in town is going to want a speed limit sign on their block. And those signs cost a lot of money unless you've got somebody staying there and you lower the speed limit. You're putting a 25-mile an air sign up there or a 30-mile an air sign, you know, let's wake up people. Cost in town a lot of money for speed limit signs that you can't enforce.
I don't know. That was just what Donnie and I discussed. I.
I mean, yeah, because people want it and I don't think we can run a, I don't think we should start doing speed limit signs on every block in town. Traffic light at one end and the other end, you've got to slow down to go across Farquhar Street. If you don't, your car is going to bottom out. After bottom out, they ruin their car. That's their problem.
I just have one question with that, Perry, is that. I don't know what year it was, but there was a street sign project that we all looked over. That Brian had worked on. And we had said that we were going to try to start to. Place these signs around. After everybody had looked at the report. Do you guys recall the report that was given out?
Yes, I looked at, I looked at the report last week because I've dug it back out. And I also look at signs in other towns and I think, you know, if you all want to spend the money for signs on every block, I don't have a problem with it. When you need money for something else, don't start complaining because there's no money in the budget because you're spending on stop signs on every corner. Think something you really got to think about. And, and you know, the only way you're going to stop people from going over 25, you get the people that are driving fast are the people that live there. And you sit there and work radar a couple of times. That eliminates that. And then since you give somebody that lives on that street a parking or speeding ticket, and then they're complaining because they say you're picking on them. Just like people living in a cul-de-sac are the ones that are speeding because they're the ones that live there and their children are the ones running up down the street. I don't care what you want to do, but you've got to stop. When you look at that list of what, all the signs that Brian has on there. That should be placed in town, you look at the money you're going to spend for stop signs. I just think that good gesture, but I think it's something that you really ought to consider before you start putting them on every corner. Every block. Everybody's, I mean, Donnie, Donnie can tell you back when Farquhar Street was repaid. When he took the railroad track out of there, those people requested stop sign on every corner where you cross. They required speed limit signs on that street. You know, everybody knows if you're going up and down that street, there's every corner you have to stop. Therefore, if you're on Farquhar, but then they wanted them on every corner. So. It's something you better really con seriously think about because. You're going to have, every time you get somebody new that moves in town in a house that has a dog, you're going to want a speed limit sign or a stop sign. And the street is not made to play in. That's the reason why we have parking lots, you have your playgrounds. It's something to think about.
We were just putting that one up there because the poll was already there from the handicap sign. That's the only reason it was going in there. I'm not going around and putting part, speed limit signs everywhere, just one. The only other thing I had was received my notification that I will be vice chair again for the. Engagement and Outreach Committee and our first meeting will be on September 23rd and it will be virtual. That's the group that handles the Banner City, Banner Town program and the If I Were Mayor contest and. Couple of other things. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Amy?
You're welcome.
Hello. I have only had two calls for water and or sewer since our last meeting. One was from a lady on North Main Street about her bill. I did refer her to call the town office because I don't know what her bill entails. And told her if she needed to speak with me any further to call me back and I called Dawn as soon as I hung up with her. I also received a call from David. On Saturday, August 15th, he lives at 11 South Main Street. His water meter was leaking. I called Mike Zachman and he responded to the resin. Immediately, literally immediately and fixed the problem. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Oh.
Okay, I contacted White Pine and the contract was sent out to them Friday. And so. I requested, I suggested. That when they come to do the streets, they do the community center all at the same time. That way it cut down on traveling back and forth and all over the place. So. He did not give me a time date, but this is the end of August already, so. I would assume that it'd be in September at some period of time that. He'll come in and take care of this project, the streets and the community center. Like I had, before this meeting started, I informed Edgar, he's. That we are going to have a meet with a contractor on Wednesday at 2 o'clock at Community Center. For the possibility of putting extra lights on the parking lot where the big ball diamond is. Next to the bank, not out there. Not out on the park, oh, not on the parking area, but right next to the bank. It would be out of the traffic lane. So I think that would be a real plus for them up there. Chris went down and working on the park again, going some of the. Weeds now. So that's an ongoing project. It looks like all the time, so. Other than that, that's pretty much, pretty much it for me.
Okay, Donald, I did talk to a, the lady, she was a Martin, but now she's Smith. She lives in Littlestank or Liberty Town. And her family did own the property at the end of. Main Street and 75 where people run down over to the bank. That's all grown up. That the county says that they don't own, the state highway actually owns that piece of property. The state highway back in the early 60s bought that piece of property from the Martin family. It used to be a butcher shop down there. They bought it. And that was for the extension of the Route 75, 77 bypass. And the house that sat there was moved up on the hill. Buzz Schiffer bought that house and that's where Nancy Schiffer lives now. That house was moved from the bottom of Main Street to north end of Main Street. And that piece of property does belong to the state because it come to me a couple of times here and. Said that we have to go there and mow down or do something with Johnson grass in that field. But that is state property. They keep saying it's not and I've contacted them and told them time and time again. But then I talked to Mrs. Smith last week or two weeks ago. And she said that the state or the state highway did buy that piece of property. It does belong to them because her family had to move off of the. Property and they had their. Butcher shop there and the house were moved.
I, I actually remember the house being moved, so that is correct what you're speaking of.
I guess we'll just have to stay on the state highway when, when the county comes to tell us we have to mow Johnson grass. Their fate is with the state highway.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, Edgar.
I don't have anything at this time. You're right about that. The state owns that. And that house, that big house that crossed there, that was tore down. That house that you're talking about was right next to. The international dealership right next to the telephone company that moved up. Schiffer bought that house. He moved it up there on the hill. The state doesn't know that ground out.
They took right away all that property, so it is theirs.
Right, right. You're right.
Thank you, Edgar. Okay, Laura.
All right, I did not have any late calls, but I did attend the ice cream social on Thursday and I thought it was well attended. Everyone seemed to be enjoying it. I posted it, I have a Facebook page and I posted it on my Facebook page and it was shared several times. One of the times it was shared on the Elmer Wolf PTO page and it reached over 800 people. So I thought that was kind of good that it went that far. But the people I spoke to that night had already filled out their census, so you know.
They came out for the free ice cream.
Yes, but they had already filled out their census, so that's all I have.
Okay, I hope you're enjoying P Creek. She's up there at P Creek enjoying her vacation and here we are in Union Bridge.
I am. I went for a run by the lake this morning. We've been kayaking. The lake is just like, you know, 50 feet behind me. It's awesome.
Well, good, good for you. Hope you and your family enjoy.
We are, thank you.
Is there anything else for us this evening? Hey. Are you raising your hand, Amy, or are you just? All right, our next work session meeting will be September the 14th. Next council meeting will be September the 28th. So if there's nothing else, we're in line for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mandy, for attending and helping us out here this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.